Yeah.
Daytime clock. Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're calling the City Council meeting Tuesday, October 7, 2025, to order at 6:00 p.m. If you would please rise for the pledge.
Let me do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks or abusive language. All public remarks shall be addressed to the chair. Comments should not be directed toward individual council members, city staff, or other members of the public. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone. Thank you. There are no names. Is there anyone who didn't have an opportunity to sign up who would like to make a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 1.1. Mayor, City Council, and/or members of the city staff may make announcements about city or community events. Who will handle that today?
All right, our first announcement tonight, we have a National Night Out, which is occurring right now until 9:00 p.m. in your local neighborhood. Get to know your neighbors better and help create safer neighborhoods by participating in National Night Out. If you'd like to know more information about this event, you can go to seabrooktexas.gov/nnO. Our second event, here we have the Costume Paul Parade. You can dress your pets for a good time over at Metter Park, which is on Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, from 10:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday, October 25th. And our last event here is National Drug Take Back Day, where you can safely dispose unused or expired prescription medications at the Seabrook Police Department. That is also occurring on Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Seabrook Police Department. If you want to know more information on that, you can look at seabrooktexas.gov/deatakeback. If you want to know any more information about events going on in Seabrook, you can check our website or any other social media. That's what I got here.
Did we miss anything? Thank you very much. All right, item 1.2, City Manager update and report to City Council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook Boards and Commissions, transportation projects, and City of Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor and Council, on your Boards and Commissions updates since your last regular meeting, your Planning and Zoning Commission met on September 18th, where they heard the conditional use permit for Seabrook Cheese Company for an open air market. That was approved, and you will be hearing that as a specific public hearing on your November 4th council meeting. They also discussed the hazardous materials and fencing, and they'll have another meeting on that item, and that will be coming back to City Council at a later date. Your Parks and Trails Committee did not have a quorum on October 2nd, so they will be moving their regular meeting to October 16th at 4:00. And they will just be discussing a possibility of a new skate park with those members that you previously heard from at this last council meeting, and they will be making recommendations back to you for a new skate park. They'll also be looking at various maintenance items throughout the park system, be discussing their appreciation luncheon, and continuing their discussion on the $160,000 for Keep Texas Beautiful grant and how that works in coordination with TechStot and their bidding process. The EDC will be meeting this Thursday, October 9th, and they will be looking at the tabled item for the Palma Dora's Crown Trophy, has submitted an application for an incentive, and they will also be looking at the process for the business of the year for EDC. And also looking again at the incentive policy for potential amendments and discussion items on that. Specific public hearings has been posted again on November 4th for the conditional use permit for the Seabrook Cheese Company. On your transportation projects, a quick update on Red Bluff, which is what I refer to as your Highway 146 Expansion 2.0 up there. Met or talked a little bit with the foreman over there. They are, as you can tell, currently working on that third lane. Their plan right now is to target trying to get the new entrance ramp northbound open. So that's the entrance ramp, if you don't go up there, just past the Shell Station, that they'll try to get open by January or February of 2026. In Phase 2, they will continue trying to get all of the northbound third lane in motion in permanent concrete. Phase 3 and the final will be the southbound third lane, and that will be completing of the project. Southern Access Road, no significant update on that. That's your Port Houston project. That will be extension of Red Bluff Road. Right now, the design is still slotted for quarter 1 of 2026, so early 2026, that project could be in as early as a bid phase. The rail spur, there's with the federal shutdown, there's no real update on that, so we don't expect that to move for a little while. On the city side, East Meyer project, y'all approved a design proposal, so we are at 50% design of East Meyer, and we are discussing some possible changes that we'll bring back to council on your North Meyer project. We got word today from the county, we have a 50-50, as you recall, grant with the county. That project is slowed significantly. They're just now getting to bidding the consulting for the design, so we've been waiting on a year for that. So we are in discussions with the county for possibly bringing back a proposal to City Council to move that in-house and not continue to wait on the county, because at this point, we would not be into construction until late '27. So more to come on North Meyer. Your CIP projects are interconnects. We're still waiting on City of Pasadena, further negotiations on that. We're still working with them. Seascape off Red Bluff, we are looking now at more of November completion. They're boring lines under Red Bluff currently right now. And your wastewater treatment plant went out for bid, and we've got two publications to notice. We'll do a bid opening on October 30th for the demolition of the plant. Forest Main on Pine Gully and Forest Main at down there by Pier 8, we're having some right-of-way issues continuing on that, so we're still working through that with our engineering firm to move to the next step. Your municipal pool, Pelican Bay Pool, is underway. We finalized the design bid build contract on that, and they're simultaneously still working on the pool design. The City Hall generator behind us here, behind basically the police station, has been installed now, and we're waiting on plumbing and electrical, and that will hopefully come soon, and we'll finish that. Fire station, any day now, we'll have that new generator delivered, and we'll get that one hooked up as well. EMS expansion, we had our groundbreaking, can bend back over there. We've totally, they've totally taken up all the concrete for the pad site, ripped up the sidewalk over there, and they're mobilizing on the utility work now. Carruthers East Garden is reaching substantial completion. They're gonna need a surveyor to go back out there and do cross-sections. Once that's complete and it's signed off, city crews will move in and start the granite trails on the plans. Your fire training tower, we'll be talking a little bit more about that this evening. And then lastly, the community house remodel, again, this is a continuation from this past fiscal year of remodeling and sprucing up that. So we ripped up all the landscaping, and we'll be having a contractor move in next week to start doing wood repairs and then ultimately painting in time for the holidays. Any questions?
On the Carruthers, will they be laying the topsoil before the trail goes down?
No, the topsoil is not part of this phase for that grading and drainage.
Okay. Thank you.
Were you able to get any additional information from Brian regarding the decommissioned rail crossing at Red Bluff?
We did send another email after we discussed, and I copied TechStot and Harris County, so I did get a response that they would take it internally, so we'll keep plugging at them to try to figure out whose baby that is.
Thank you.
I have a question on Carruthers. Has the Parks Committee come up with a planning schedule yet?
They, to my knowledge, have not. I think that's part of their additional conversations.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Item 2.1, Presentation of the Life, pardon me, item 2 Presentations, item 2.1, Presentation of a Life Saving Award for Assisting in a Water Rescue to the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department, SVFD, Assistant Fire Chief, Seabrook Police, and Communications Officers, and Councilmember Sesim is going to do that.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Seabrook residents. Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department has a longstanding history of teamwork, dedication, and recognition as one unified department. Tonight is one of those special occasions where I'm deeply honored to recognize one of our own. On the evening of Friday, September 26th, Assistant Chief Andy Castick-Leone responded to a call at the Seabrook Marina for a vehicle in the water. The incident involved a female driver whose vehicle had left the roadway and was quickly becoming submerged. As those of us in public safety know, in situations like this, every second counts. Without hesitation, Chief Castick-Leone acted. He assessed the scene, entered the water, and executed a swift and effective rescue. Because of his quick actions and calm decision-making, a life was saved that evening. This is not Andy's first time demonstrating his commitment to our community. As many may remember, back in July of 2020, we had a water rescue out in the waterway, where Chief Castick-Leone swam out 300 yards to, again, rescue someone who was stuck out in the water. And both these incidents appear also seem to happen in the evening time, which makes the difficulty even more intense. So I am with, oh, sorry. With this particular event serves as powerful reminder of the values that define Seabrook Volunteers Fire Department's courage, dedication, and service above self. On behalf of the City of Seabrook and the Volunteer Fire Department, I am proud to publicly commend Assistant Chief Castick-Leone. His heroic actions not only saved a life, but also remind us all of the bravery and selfless that define our first responders every single day. Please join me in congratulating Chief Andy Castick-Leone on receiving his life-saving award.
Chief President. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to all the first responders, and we all love and appreciate the work that you do every day for us to keep us safe. Item 2.2, Mayor Sweeney to present a proclamation declaring the week of October 5th, 2025, through October 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Seabrook. Make sure I have the right one. Yes, I do. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Seabrook is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Seabrook and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes today, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which, if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education and the safe use of lithium-ion batteries, and whereas the proper disposal and the recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community, and whereas Seabrook first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach, and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety, Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, I, Jim Sweeney, Mayor of Seabrook, Texas, do hereby proclaim the October, the week of October 5 through 11, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Seabrook. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused to seal the city to be fixed. This the 7th day of October, 2025. Who will be accepting this? Everyone, please. Maybe let's the City Council come down and take a picture, huh? With everybody? Get the whole crew, sure, yeah.
Y'all gonna have to do a couple of layers.
Everybody move this way. Oh, you got it, okay. So whoever's in the middle, Jared, Jared's the middle. Everybody on this side, take a corner turn toward Jared. Everybody on that side, take a corner turn that way toward Jared, and act like you like each other. This is Chamber of Commerce, Dave.
I don't think I'm gonna get everybody in it. We're gonna have to have a couple of layers of people. Y'all don't really need to be in there. There you go. Yeah. Perfect. I've got two cameras, so bear with me. Okay, and one more camera, sorry. Sorry, sorry. This is a thing now. Okay. All right, ready? One, two. Got it.
Pardon me, I forgot something. I have one more proclamation. Bear with me. This is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member, and whereas domestic violence impacts our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in three women and one in four men have experienced violence by an intimate partner, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting women, men, and children, and society as a whole, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent domestic violence and how to support survivors, and whereas the staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in Seabrook, Texas encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing domestic violence in Seabrook, Texas through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, I, Jim Sweeney, Mayor of Seabrook, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by Bay Area Turning Point to work toward the elimination of domestic violence. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused to seal the city to be affixed. This the 7th day of October, 2025. And we have Emmanuel Walker from the Bay Area Turning Point here to accept.
You're welcome. You wanna do, yeah? Everybody wanna come? This is good. Do it for the seal? Okay, then everybody can either come down or get out.
Y'all come down. Come on down.
All right.
It'll keep you warm. It's like you have response. You already know the spot. All right, ready? Two. Three. Two. Okay.
When I was given the list to the City Manager, I neglected National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Both my daughter and my sister are breast cancer survivors, so maybe in the next meeting, we can do something with that. Oh, good, thank you. Item 2.4, Her Presentation from Driver and Rescue LLC on the Agreement Between the City of Seabrook and Driver and Rescue LLC, LITSE of the property located at 2613 and a half Nassau Parkway, operating as the yard at Barge 295, for temporary conditional exceptions to code and ordinances due to hurricane barrel damage to the primary structure of the barge. I left the microphone on.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, everybody else. Thanks for having us up here this evening. All right, Pat, you wanna go ahead and skip to the first one? All right, folks, we're here to request an extension of the variance that you granted us to keep the tent in the yard while we work through our final plans to construct a more permanent structure. We'll start here with the history. Barge 295, formerly Lance's Turtle Club, has been a part of Seabrook community for decades. Since becoming Barge 295, management has invested heavily in remodeling and improvements to achieve its business plan. In doing so, we've worked closely with the city on major capital improvements. Hurricane Barrel brought a new set of challenges that impacted the bar and the restaurant. We're pleased to announce that since we have reopened, we've been doing well, and participation from the community has been beyond our expectations. While it's been very challenging over the last several years, the barge is an asset to the community. We support numerous charities and city-sponsored events. We operate one of the most unique venues in the area. We have a strong following and outstanding support from our patrons. Our location is one of few places that allows its patrons to enjoy the Seabrook waterfront. MMU's and Seabrook's Comprehensive Master Plan 2030. Barge 295 is uniquely positioned in the mixed-use lakefront district and should be continued to be treated different than other zoning designations, as described in Seabrook's Comprehensive Master Plan 2030. While there are many fears of setting a precedent by allowing this variance to be extended, we believe our needs and the use of this structure align. We hope the city works with us while we work towards a more permanent solution. Comprehensive Master Plan 2030. Barge 295 is in alignment with many of the stated goals of the city and community. Our location and business checks all of the boxes regarding to waterfront development, including but not limited to economic development, community events, community character, small-town feel, and waterfront location. The City of Seabrook Vision Statement. Seabrook is a sustainable, energetic, and beautiful coastal community that embraces environmental stewardship, fosters safe neighborhoods, and promotes tourism and economic diversity. Residents identified restaurants, entertainment venues, and high-end retail as the top three most desired businesses to see developed in Seabrook. Continued. The mixed-use lakefront district is designed to accommodate a select group of commercial and recreational land use activities associated with waterfront areas. The primary land use orientation of the district is retail, commercial, business establishments in conjunction with marine-type uses. The land uses within this district are also intended to meet a portion of the community's tourism and recreational demand by accommodating waterfront activities associated with commercial uses such as restaurants, retail shops, recreational services, and hotels. Incorporating piers, boardwalks, outdoor patios, and cafes into site development of properties located in this district is encouraged. Community Involvement. Barge 295 has been active in the community and has partnered with multiple organizations to promote city, community, and charitable associations. These include but are not limited to the following: the Lighthouse Charity Group, the Cole Gordon Foundation, the Longhorn Project at Johnson Space Center, city-sponsored events, local police and firefighters, and Seabrook Saltwater Derby. Barge would like to obtain an extension on its current agreement with the city to allow the continued use of the structured tent. the continued use of the structured tent and trailer restrooms. Our schedule is Q4 2025, work with the city staff to obtain and address any permitting issues. Q4 2025, finalize bid process and funding. Q1 2026, award contracts. Q1 2026, start construction. Q1 2026, finish improvements. Economic Impact. There's little debate that our business has substantial and positive economic impact for the city and community. Tourism, job creation, tax revenue attract non-resident locals into Seabrook. Based on several past events, 60% of participants have been from outside Seabrook. We are confident that this also helps other businesses in the community by driving more potential customers into the area during business hours. It's also fair to say that this added revenue contributes to the hot tax used for other economic development and promotion. There's the site location I imagine you guys are familiar with. And we have a few conceptual drawings of potential solutions that we plan to put out there. This is some of the engineering specs for the structure. Yeah, this is actually an engineered drawing that we have for a covering that would go over top the pier. And this is another potential drawing that we had engineered for the roof covering on the second floor of the barge. It's been a pretty good last two months since we opened on June 20th. We really appreciate all the support that we've been given, and due to just the nature of opening, reopening a business and a restaurant, it's taken up quite a bit of our time, so we do apologize that we haven't been able to attend this, attend to this in a more timely manner. But it is a vital component to our ability to generate revenue in the yard, and we hope that you'll be willing to work with us and allow us to keep that in place until we're able to construct the permanent solution. Patrick, do you have anything? Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
I have a question, and you pretty much answered it. Should council not approve the tent? How will that impact the yard? Will that, obviously winter's coming, that's gonna impact your operations in the yard?
Absolutely. It's really vital to us being able to have outdoor activities in inclement weather, and especially in the wintertime. We have side walls that we're able to close it in and provide space or heating to make it more comfortable.
So, I've heard, I've heard a concern about, you know, the tent not being windstorm or anything of that nature. My question is, could this tent, if there were a storm or something, could this tent be broken down if it absolutely needed to?
Absolutely, and that is our agreement with the installer. In the event that a named storm is within the cone of uncertainty, we have an agreement to have that tent broken down within 48 hours.
I just have one further question. You mentioned quarter 1 2026. How far into 2026, based on the plans and what you know about the construction, are we talking about?
Well, the contractors that we've discussed this with believe that they can build it inside of two to three weeks, so it really all depends on just how quickly we can get the permitting. Anything to add?
No. Anyone else? All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you making the presentation to us tonight. If there are no objections from council, I'd like to call us into executive session. Item 551-071, consultation with attorney on matters which city attorney has a duty to advise city council on close the executive session.
I joined at 6:51.
Oh, that's what I put, 6:30. All right, thank you, everyone. Yes, thank you. Item three, specific public hearings, okay. Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to request to amend the Seabrook Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article II, Administration, Section 2.03.5, prohibited uses to modify the ordinance adoption process by reducing the required number of readings and to create a special exception permitting the use of shipping storage containers in the construction of above-ground and below-ground swimming pools. There'll be two public hearings. This one is for the Code of Ordinances. The next one will be specifically about swimming pools. Do you have a presentation for us, sir?
Is it okay to go ahead and give my staff report?
Yes, please.
Okay, so a few months ago, we had a citizen come forward to staff and they were there was an interest in building a swimming pool out of a shipping container. Staff communicated there was an exclusion within our ordinance to use shipping containers for any purposes. There's one exception, you can use them during construction periods. I took this item to the Planning and Zoning Commission to see if there was an interest to take this up to even consider it, and there was. So over about a five-month period, we went through back and forth, and this is what ultimately the recommendation is. When I was going through the ordinance, there's two parts of this. You're going to read a second public hearing next, which is gets into the weeds of what the ordinance is as far as regulatory authorities city has to make sure it's constructed a certain way. The first thing that needed to be addressed in Section 2.03.5 is the prohibited use section of the ordinance where there's the exclusion. What we've created or what's being recommended is an exception to that section of the ordinance to allow this use with shipping containers. I'm going to show you some pictures further in my presentation. These shipping container-type pools typically are going to be package units like a spa. They come out already constructed. At one end, typically where the doors used to be, those open up and that's where all the pool equipment is, and you bring this out and it's a package unit they put it in your backyard. One of the things that I did need to correct is about 16 years ago, we went from having three readings of ordinance to two readings of ordinance. And as part of that ordinance, there's always the language if there's any conflicts that should be modified and changed. It wasn't caught by BUNYCODE, our staff in the section of the ordinance, and so one of the recommendations is to make that correction as we're going through and making these modifications. So with that, that covers this topic. If you guys have any questions, I welcome them, please.
Any questions? Are there any public comments? Anyone want to comment about the swimming pools? Okay, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll go to item 3.2, conduct a public hearing to consider a request to amend the Seabrook Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Division 9, Swimming Pools, to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and to create an amendment allowing an alternative construction method using shipping storage containers for above-ground and below-ground swimming pools, including all related regulations and amendments. I assume this is the picture portion of the presentation.
So as we were reviewing this section of the code, again, this is going to be an amendment, the allowance of this and the prescriptive elements of this are going to be an amendment to the swimming pool code. As we were going through and reviewing this, we found that when we adopted the swimming pool code itself, we adopted it as part of an adoption of the Building Code referencing an appendix. The Building Code has changed, and that appendix doesn't exist as we adopted it anymore, so currently we're working where we're in a gray area of how our swimming pool code's been adopted. So what P&amp;Z is recommending as part of this modification is that we adopt the actual 2021 edition of the International Swimming Pool Code. And so that's the first element of this, is adopting that element. So it'll just become the new swimming pool code will be this, what we're adopting or recommending. Next is number five on this page. Again, these are the current amendments of the swimming pool code that you're looking at right now. We've added number five, so within our zoning ordinance right now, this requirement's already in place. However, when you read through the codes, I think it's a better practice that this is where you look for all the swimming pool code elements. We haven't modified it in the zoning ordinance, we're not recommending that, but we're recommending adding that, this section to this code. So anybody who's designing a swimming pool, they can find this where they're probably looking for it, not in our zoning code. So that was the modification, it's on this sheet right here. And then this is just renumbering as we go through the amendment section, it's just the renumbering of what's already existing. The items in red are the changes. Next, I'm going to summarize all this because I don't think you guys want me to read it to you, but in summary, what we've created is the actual requirements. And in summary, what we've done is this pool system, it could be a DUI type system. Somebody could try to do this on their own. However, we've covered that in when we created this regulations because this has to be an engineered system. So if somebody wants to come in and try to build something like this on-site, it has to be engineered. It'll have to be signed off by a structural engineer so that we make sure this thing's not going to float away. The same thing even if it's a package unit. If it's designed and it comes in, we'll get engineered drawings to show how it's going to be anchored, meet our other codes, things like that. In summary, what all this language beyond that just states is it has to be in compliance with our, all our construction codes, building, electrical, mechanical. And it also, there's one element where it gets to the point where this was an item of concern. Nobody, if you had a big lot and you brought in a shipping container and this thing was nine foot tall, it probably doesn't matter. But if you live in a subdivision, that was a major point of conversation, and you live in a 65 by 125 lot, and somebody sticks a nine-foot shipping container in the backyard, it's hanging over the fence, and now they turn it into a swim pool, that could be problematic. That's where this restriction came in place, that the maximum height from finished grade is 54 inches of one of these structures. So they're either going to have to put it in the ground so it's never more than 54 inches, or it's a package unit that comes out that's no higher than 54 inches in height. Where that number came from is typically a lot of the swimming pools that you can buy that are above ground, when we did the research, that's the standard height of a lot of those swimming pools, they're about 54 inches tall. They rarely even get close to six foot in height, so that's kind of the general height. I did provide some pictures. These are kind of the package units that I was discussing, so typically this is what they look like when they come out. There's several companies in the area that makes these. A lot of these pictures are things, these are something that they're doing a lot in the Austin area, and one of these companies that I got these pictures from is in Austin. You can do a lot of things with them with the windows and the different heights and elevations. You can elevate them. I mean, in some of our situations, you know, you could have an elevated pool like this. In our situation, it can't be 54.
... policy for the Public Funds Investment Act, PFIA.
Move to approve the concerned agenda?
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes the motion. Councilmember Sesame, seconds. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, unanimous, thank you. Item five, boards and commissions. Item 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the appointment of members to the Ethics Review Commission with terms to expire on October 15, 2027. Councilman Hammond and Councilman Coubana are the two interviewers. Do you have recommendations for counsel?
Yes, we do. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming in, interviewing, and being willing to serve our community. Had a lot of great conversations. We'd like to nominate current alternate Helen Hanks from alternate to the Ethics Review Commission. We'd also like to nominate Galvin Moore and Brandy Talady with George Harris serving as alternate.
Second.
Oh, I was writing it down. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Coubana, and a second from Councilmember Hammond. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who applied, and congratulations to the new members. All right, item six, new business. Item 6.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the supplement to the agreement between the City of Seabrook and Morgan Southwest Land Company and Driver and Rescue Club, LLC, lesee of the property located at 2613 and a half NASA Parkway, operating as the yard at bar 295. I think we should get a motion and a second if we have one, and then discuss.
Okay, I'd like to move to extend the supplemental agreement between the City of Seabrook and the Morgan Southwest Land Company and Driver Rescue Club, LLC, the lesee of the property located at 2613 and a half NASA Parkway, with the understanding that at the end of the first quarter of 2026, that the current and existing tent will be removed.
Have a motion for a second. Councilmember Hammond makes the motion, and Councilmember Sesame, seconds. Do you need clarification? Thank you. All right, we have any discussion?
So my main concern with this, first of all, it's a killer sound abatement. It's not just a run-of-the-mill tent, so I just want to put on public record that when we talk about a structured tent, it's not just a run-of-the-mill tent. Mike said it can come down, and should I call you Mr. Robinson because they don't know which one we're talking about? So Mike said that it can come down within 48 hours should it need be for safety. Several of the people that have attended any kind of nonprofit work there have said it's come in really handy. The way you guys work is unbelievable. My only and biggest concern is that we set a precedent that it makes it difficult for us to tell someone else no that they can't have a structured tent, and that's the only thing that's holding me back from making a 100% yes on it. So I just, yeah.
I'd just like to add that the tent came up because of Hurricane Barrel and the unprecedented damage that it did to this business. And that's why it was allowed to begin with. And so, I mean, going forward, that would be one of the restrictions we look at if someone else came forward wanting a tent.
Yeah, so this business is an asset to the community, and they wouldn't be in this position had it not been for Hurricane Barrel. They, for lack of a better word, and no pun intended, they weathered the storm, and this tent has enabled them to do what's needed to be done. And so, yeah, I just think that as a result of the storm, that we should go ahead and extend and give them that time to finish what they need to do.
Anybody else? I think I'd just like to mention that we, did you mention the restrooms in your motion?
No.
Okay, we're just extending, all right. We're going to bring up the restrooms here later in the meeting, and so, you know, in my mind, the tent as it exists, that structure has made a significant difference in the noise. In fact, I don't think we've had any noise complaints or very many noise complaints. noise complaints or very many noise complaints. I think I'm generally in favor of the motion.
I'm okay with moving forward as long as we have specific timeframes when you're submitting the final projects, when the tent comes down, a final deadline on that, and stop having the back and forth, because it just creates a lot of energy that is nonproductive in my mind. I just want us to move forward, have a copacetic working relationship, everybody make money, everybody wins, but also make sure we're not setting precedents that are hard to fight down the road, which is where the hard part of being on council comes in, honestly, because the business is killer. It's not a question.
Yes, sir.
I think too, like in their presentation, like he kind of like set a schedule, like, you know, they're planning for completion as end of Q1 2026. And kind of like what, you know, Councilman Hammond said, you know, this is all related to Hurricane Barrel. And then, yeah, it's been, you know, a little time since the storm, but there have been, you know, unexpected, you know, unexpected things have come up throughout it. And then, you know, like you, like we said, you know, unintended purposes of putting the cover-up also helped with some of the sound issues as well. So, you know, and while I agree that, you know, we need to have a hard deadline, you know, but it seems like, you know, they've done, you know, what their due diligence and their homework and their, they have a timeframe on the table of when they expect to have this completed. And then we just, you know, at the end of that day, you know, either, you know, the permanent structure is up, or the temporary tents come down.
I just want specific dates, not ambiguous Q1, Q2, you know, that thing. I want dates, just to be fair across the board.
Well, I think it wouldn't be unfair to ask at some point, maybe toward the end of the year, that you come back and give us updates on your time schedule and maybe, you know, make sure that everything is rocking and rolling on the Q4 timeframe as we move into Q1 2026. Yeah. All right, I think this is a, you know, I mean, it's a unique situation, so, but I think we're, we seem to be all in agreement. Is everyone ready to vote on the motion? All right, all in favor? Raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Item 6.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2025-09, a request to amend the Seabrook Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2, Administration, Section 2.03.5, prohibited uses to modify the ordinance adoption process by reducing the required number of readings and to create a special exception permitting the use of shipping storage containers in the construction of above-ground and below-ground swimming pools. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve 6.2.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cabana has a second. Do I have any conversation about that? I think not. Thank you. All in favor? Raise your hand. Opposed? Want to oppose? Councilmember Sanford. Item 6.1, I didn't read the ordinance. You want me to read the ordinance? You good? Want to give it that? No? Okay. Item 6.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2025-14, a request to amend the Seabrook Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, Division 9, Swimming Pools, to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code and to create an amendment allowing an alternative construction method using shipping storage containers for above-ground, below-ground swimming pools, including all related regulations and amendments.
Move to approve 6.3.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Cabana, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It looks like unanimous. Thank you. Item 6.3. Item 6.4, consider and take all appropriate action on approval on the first reading of ordinance 2025-21, updating Section 2-47, Agenda Establishing, to reflect changes enacted by voters in the 2025 Special Charter election as well as new requirements by the state of Texas. An ordinance amending Section 2-47 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Seabrook, Texas, entitled Agenda Establishing, by revising such section to require the placing of items on the agenda to comply with new Texas law and applicable city charter provisions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for notice, and providing for Open Meetings Act compliance.
Move to approve 6.4.
Councilmember makes the motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Sanford, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Item 6.5, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-23, nominating a candidate or candidates to the Board of Directors for Harris Central Appraisal District. Our options are one candidate, two candidates, or no candidates. I have recommendation from a current HCAD board member. If anyone would like to hear the names for a motion, or somebody else has something else?
I would like to hear.
If you'd like to, okay. Some of you, let me find it. I wrote it down here. That's the, there it is. All right, some of you might know, I received a nomination from a former Houston City Councilwoman who's a current HCAD director, and he nominated Bill Frazier, F R A Z E R, who is a CPA and not currently on HCAD, and Melissa Noriega, who is also a former Houston City Councilmember and a current HCAD director for the two, for two positions. Anybody else? Anybody?
No, I'm good with that nomination.
So do I have a motion to accept the nomination of those two members?
Yeah, make a motion to accept the two nominations.
Councilmember Cervantes makes a motion to accept Bill Frazier and Melissa Noriega.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. F R A Z E R, Frazier. All right, thank you. Item 6.6, consider and take all appropriate action on submission of the official ballot for the election of the Region 14 Director of the TML Board of Directors. There was a group, oh, there it is, in your packet. Sally Branson, who's a councilmember of Friendswood, sent a nice note just, I got a few minutes ago, that said she would appreciate her selection. Robin Collins, some of us know, Mayor Kima, Tom Cruz, who I know as a councilmember in Lake City, Emmanuel Guerrero, Councilmember Pasadena also sent an email requesting our support. Josh Pratt, Frank Robinson, I don't know, but those are our choices. If we'd like to, if anybody would like to select one, or we could take votes on names, whatever, however you want to do it. Somebody want to make a motion for somebody?
I want to make a motion for Sally Branson, councilmember from Friendswood.
Councilmember Sanford makes a motion for Sally Branson, Councilmember Friendswood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Sesame, second. Do I have any discussion or amendments or changes? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Sally Branson, Councilmember Friendswood is our candidate. All right. Item 6.7, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-17, designating Around the Bay News as the official newspaper of the City of Seabrook.
Move to approve 6.7.
Second.
Councilmember makes a motion to approve 6.7. Councilmember Sanford, seconds the motion. I think we're currently using the Citizen. This is at least a less expensive option, kind of a LaPorte local paper. Any, anybody have any questions or discussion about that?
I do. I have some concerns, although this seems like a open and shut topic. There are some very specific rules and guidelines with the publication that we choose, one of which is that the publication has been in circulation for a year and has released no less than 52 concurrent publications. The other one is that it must be entered as a periodical postal matter. So that means they have to be able to
Nail it.
Correct, correct. So upon looking at it, Around the Bay is not its own publication. It's actually insert into the Hometown Press, which is then owned by Texas Media Corp. And so I am having a hard time. And when I was looking, I actually purchased a subscription to that and noticed that the very first release from Around the Bay was July 9. So that was very, very recent. I have questions as to if this release is legally allowed to be our named publication due to the aforementioned reasons.
Final point. Does anybody?
So Hometown Press has been in existence for several years. Around the Bay News is a section of that. And when I consulted with legal, they stated that it was.
So I'd like to see if Dave Olson would buy in.
Sure. And we talked about this earlier. I mean, there is no opinion or case on point as it relates to this type of an arrangement. I think ultimately, if somebody was to take a look at this, like a court or another body that was reviewing this decision, ultimately, they're going to look at the end user, the subscriber. And if that end user is receiving a publication that they have received for, I don't know how long it's been, several years now, and there's an additional insert, I think that they would find that that satisfies that publication requirement.
Okay. So with that being said, I did more research into the Bay Area Observer that we used previously. And although they didn't, also, same situation, they've been in existence for a lot longer, but they, due to an acquisition, they missed two mailouts that rendered them unqualified. However, they have also partnered with the publication that's been in existence for a very long time that actually does fit the public notice requirements. And so in the, in the name of fairness, I think that we should open this up and give them the opportunity to also submit.
I actually spoke to the publisher of the Observer at the Ruben cutting, and she told me that they didn't qualify.
So what I believe, she didn't realize that there was this loophole. And she is, it's almost identical. She is in partnership
She's an insert with somebody?
Correct. She's in partnership with one that does meet those requirements.
So are you asking for an RFP?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is she, but is she an insert into a newspaper that's currently being?
Yeah, she's a, she's a part of that publication.
Because I picked her, I picked the Bay Area Observer up over there, and it was a separate little piece, so that's why I didn't.
My other question, so, I mean,
We don't have to make a decision.
I think we should. So I guess what I, I would like to make a motion to
Oh, we're paying four times as much.
I understand that, but doing the right thing is doing the right thing. I mean, I'm all for saving money, but we also don't want to open ourselves up if, you know, we have turned away somebody that also fits those requirements.
So then we just vote, and if
Yeah.
we made the motion, so we vote. And if you vote no, then we vote no. You vote no.
Yeah, I will just, one other comment. I did speak to the mayor of LaPorte or Deer Park. Honestly, I forget which one. And they're in the same situation, and they are going to wait until July to make an opinion on the Observer for that very same reason.
Yeah, and that's the other
Recognize, I don't want you to qualify this as a loophole. This just is an area of the law which has not, nobody's chimed in.
A gray area.
It's a gray area.
Yeah.
It is. So it's up to y'all. I'm talking with Gail that there might be a way to perfect this by having the arrangement be with the sponsoring paper and the insert.
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah, y'all do whatever actually you think's appropriate. And then if we need to come back and clean it up, we will.
Okay, I have a question. Then, do we have anything that has to be published? Okay. So where are we publishing now?
We currently use the Bay Area Citizen, which is run by the Chronicle. And actually, it's their South group. So when you use the Citizen, you basically have to use the three South papers. So we're paying for Pasadena, Bay Area Citizen. And I want to say, is it TIC? What the three South papers are. So, yeah, that's who we're currently using. When we lost the Observer.
Just for a point of clarification, I mean, because there's a lot of names of papers being thrown around and inserts. And I was wrong about, I thought we were naming the insert as the paper. We're naming the underlying sponsoring paper as the paper, not the insert.
So the agenda item says Around the Bay. So that's inaccurate, then?
It does name Around the Bay, and then it says Hometown Press. If you'll, in the resolution, it spells it out. And who
Yeah, so I think the intent there is we're approving the underlying paper with the understanding that the insert is the vehicle for which we will be publishing notice as a section of the underlying paper.
So we will be, we will be paying Hometown Press? Is that?
I believe that's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wrong about that. I apologize. But I was under the impression that we were approving the insert. So it was in kind of a more gray area.
Yeah.
But this does bring a little bit more comfort level to the legal side of things, that we're partnering with the underlying paper. And they just have a new section, which is this insert, which is, will provide legal notification.
Right. So the agenda item just is very misleading.
We'll correct the
Well, as long as the resolution's correct, which
The resolution is correct, so we're
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Anything else? If nothing further, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Unanimous? Thank you. All right. Item 6.8, consider and take all appropriate action on waiving or modifying the city fees for the electronic message board for use by Ed White Elementary PTA and Bay Elementary PTA for their school fall festival. I guess we should take, we should have a motion and a second.
Cam Houdrappoo, 6.8.
A second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hammond for 6.8, and a second, Councilmember Cervantes, and
That's wrong. It should be 6.7.
6.8. We've just did 6.7.
Then I was right. I take back the fact that I said I was wrong.
It was not today.
Let the record reflect that.
It's already on record.
Not today. All right, so we have a
Good company, buddy.
We have a motion and a second. Would one of you like to explain what that is about, please?
Yeah, so there was, there was a request that was submitted, and I spoke with Sean previously, from the Ed White PTA. They do a fall carnival or fall festival every year as that's their big money, money raising event. It's a vital fundraiser that directly supports teachers, classrooms, and student programs. Upon talking to Sean, the current rate for that electric signage is $200 a day, which is simply not affordable for a small PTA fundraiser or school fundraiser. So allowing them, what we're proposing is to allow them to use the signs at a set flat rate. That would pretty much cover the man, the man-hours, but it would be a meaningful gesture of support from the city. So we also, I spoke with the PTA president for Bay Elementary. They also have a spring carnival. So the agenda item, actually, it says Fall Festival, but one is Fall Festival, one is Spring Carnival. So the proposal is for maybe to allow them the utilization of this electronic signage for like a set fee of maybe $100. And that would just, you know, it would cover those man-hours and, but it would also be that, be affordable for them, sorry.
Anybody?
Gail, can you tell us what goes into making that sign get set up and why there's a charge for it?
Yeah, I was just looking, and David and I were just speaking. Put the master fee scheduled together. We usually survey multiple cities. So I think, thinking back, we probably surveyed cities to see for electronic board signs. We added it to the fee schedule at the time. What's involved is we have Public Works. That's the trailers are housed there. So we usually have two personnel. Starts off with, the director is the programmer. So he'll program whatever's going to go on each one of the monitor screens. The two personnel will deploy it, and they'll make sure it's put in place. And then when it needs to be picked up, they'll come back with the truck, trailer it back, and store it into the Public Works complex. So.
Have we ever done this before for a school?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So when I spoke with Sean, he did tell me that council has historically made exceptions and waived or modified those fees.
For a school?
I mean, does that matter?
It does.
Why?
Because once you get into doing it for one school, you have to start doing it for all schools.
This is why we named Bay Elementary and Ed White. They're the schools in our community. So that's the precedent.
Okay.
Why is that funny?
Because that has nothing to do with the cost of anything.
Really? It's an investment in our community.
It's not just an investment in our community. It's a much broader picture. And the challenge that we constantly have, what you bring to the table, Angela, is a microcosm of a situation. So what we're going to talk about is, can we do this for everybody?
The precedent is that it's
Can we do this for everybody?
The precedent.
Are you going to do this for everybody?
The precedent is that it's.
We're not interrupting each other.
Are you going to do this for every nonprofit and school that comes to the table? Are you? Yes or no?
Within Seabrook, there are two events that we're proposing, a fall carnival and a spring carnival. And this is, that is the precedent. It's an investment in our community.
Okay.
And our schools, yes. We spend money on many things that are not necessary.
I have a question.
But in terms of support for the school, I mean, we've done Pelicans for Bay. I've been there for the dedication of them. We've done some other things for it. I don't think this is a really, you know, hard thing to say that we support the school, because again, we've had them in here for any number of things. When the students are all brought in, they visit all the departments and everything. So I think it's a very good idea, and it's not that egregious an expense.
Yeah, and like, my recommendation would be like, you know, when we talk, you know, like, $100 flat rate for three days, you know, and then, you know, that way, it'll, these, these carnivals help, the funds go to the PTA. You know, the PTA uses these funds to, you know, purchase, you know, snacks for the teachers, supply for the teachers. You know, it's, it's funds that aren't, aren't available via our tax dollars. It's, you know, these parents donate things, the schools sell raffle tickets, schools sell different, different items at these carnivals, and I think, I think it's a good way for us to use our resources to, to help the schools out, and, you know, and like, you know, 200 bucks a day, you know, $600 for, for three days for these signs, you know, is not really conducive for, for the PTAs to be able to help, you know, return some of the money back to the schools. You know, and I think like, $100 flat rate for three days for education, you know, educational facilities in, in our area is, you know, not, not too much to ask for.
I think this shouldn't be a controversial discussion, and I'm baffled that it has become one.
But I, I think, are we setting a precedent? I think that's the question.
You would be, I mean, you'd think of it this way. The school is a governmental entity. So we have an inter-local cooperation act, which allows us to enter into agreements with other governmental entities. This in the spirit, the only precedent you'd be setting is that we, we're going to have to treat the school district the same way. And I don't know if there's more, I don't think there's multiple school districts in.
No. Okay.
You'd be dealing with Seabrook ISD, and when it comes to variable message sign lighting, but it's not uncommon to work with other governmental entities.
Since the resolution doesn't have a specific dollar amount, I think we should amend the resolution.
Or amend, I need amended motion.
Amended motion. All right.
I'd like to amend Angela's motion to put a flat fee of $100 for three days.
Okay. So first, we'll, we'll take a vote unless there's further discussion on the amendment. We need a second, sorry.
Second.
And Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to amend for a $100 fee for the three-day time period total. Correct? Okay. And Councilmember Cervantes, second. Any discussion on that? All right. All in favor?
The amended.
The amended motion of $100. Then we're going to vote on the main motion.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor? Okay. All opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Now we'll vote on the main motion, which is to approve the item 6.8. All in favor? Opposed? Was that an opposed?
I was in, how in favor?
All in, unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item 6.9, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a proposal to construct and install a fire training tower with burn room at the fire training grounds at 1,200 Red Bluff in an amount of $499,892.70 with WHP training towers through a cooperative purchasing contract with Sourcewell and authorizing the city manager to execute any non-necessary documents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Sessa makes a motion to approve item 6.9. Councilmember Hammond seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 7, 7.1, discuss potential amendments to the Seabrook Code of Ordinances regarding trailered restrooms, portable toilets, and portlets, and provide direction to staff on drafting ordinance language for future council consideration.
So we had a, independently, I've had a discussion with a couple of council members, and this is something that came up. My recommendation was for it to be brought for this body, for the body to consider this and direct city manager to have staff work on this item. It's, it'll be a modification more likely to the building code or plumbing code, and it will have to go to planning and zoning. As part of this process, what I would recommend is that we schedule a workshop with this body in planning and zoning, so that we can kind of talk about the concept and what the two bodies' positions are as we go through the process, because, again, they're going to provide a recommendation, and getting some guidance, you guys having a total workshop together, it might help them understand the political side of this as we go through the process also, and what you guys are thinking. With that, staff's ready, if it's your recommendation for us to move forward, staff's ready to work on this. So it's why the item was placed on the agenda.
Any discussion about that?
So one of the things that I want to make sure that we're clear of is that we can create a space for temporary restrooms to be in the city based off of our base flood elevation being what it is, such that businesses can continue with the right kind of trailered restrooms that really aren't mentioned right now.
When I drafted this language for the agenda, I included portlets and porta potties. I want it to be very clear when we go through this process and we write these, this, if we go through and adopt an ordinance that addresses this, I want to address all different types of portable solutions for restrooms, where it's very defined on when you can use a portlet or a porta potty, special events, temporary situations, and then how the trailer restrooms will be addressed that way. I think there are two different types of restroom facilities.
Yes.
And I think we need to make it very clear in our ordinance where there's no, it's not open to really a lot of interpretations, pretty black and white. It's very specific or prescribed on how this is addressed and how we regulate it, so there's no confusion.
I agree, and I'm glad you brought that up, because there's nothing that enhances your property value than having a portlet right across the street from you. But the other thing, too, is I want to make sure that we fully vet the requirements of FEMA on elevations, et cetera, because there's been a lot of things made by, you know, comments about positive backwash flat valves and building at grade level, et cetera, by a number of members of our community, that I think needs to be fully addressed so that our citizens understand what could be at risk. Like in Fort Myers, Florida, when they got put on probation and everybody's flood insurance, their premiums got raised. And what will happen is if they completely throw you out of the flood plain and you don't, can't even get flood insurance. So just as long as we fully vet that during the workshop.
And I, I agree. I think that's very important, that we go through and make sure we don't get in conflict with our flood plain ordinance, which, again, if you communicate with FEMA, that ordinance is our ordinance. However, for us to participate, they give us a model ordinance that we have to adopt, and so I think that sometimes sets a level of confusion, that they are regulating us, and they tell us the, the minimum standard that we have to have in place to participate in the federal flood insurance program. So it's important. And we have gotten some interpretations that we can use trailered restrooms. However, the key to that in their interpretation, their, their interpretation backed us on how the, their federal regulations are set up, is they cannot be connected to permanent utilities. They have to be kind of like a travel trailer in sense, and that's how they've interpreted it. And there's a section in our flood plain ordinance that states how you can have RVs or travel trailers, and they got to be road-ready, they got to be licensed, or have current registration, and they, you know, they have to be able to be pulled out in the event that there's a storm coming. So it, we would, I would recommend that we follow the standards.
And, and, you know, the one other thing, too, the wild card and the whole thing, is Washington has said that starting in 2026, FEMA, and therefore flood, will be regulated at the states. And considering the brain trust that we have in Austin, we have no idea what restrictions will be coming. So anything that we come up with is going to have to be flexible, and we'll keep it in pencil so we can erase it.
That's correct.
Okay. So I think, I guess, in my mind, we're giving direction to staff to, to, I'm sure you already have, but to further investigate the options that we have as regards to portable restrooms and trailers, specifications that we might consider for, you know, specific instances, and, you know, not just somebody screwing a couple of portlets into a trailer, and that's a trailer, that kind of thing. And then scheduling a, a co-op meeting with P&amp;Z so that we can all be on the same page. Is that sufficient?
May I? Also, I would like to make sure that we have the visibility from the road what that should look like in that ordinance, so that if they do have trailers, it's not like, it looks like we just got trailers and NASA won. I just want to make sure it looks classy whenever we actually have that. Like, there's been a, there's a business in there and they've done a very good job of concealing it. So I think that should be a standard across the board.
Yeah. I think ultimately, I think the expectation, this will be a process. This is not something we're going to solve in a month. I went through six meetings with planning and zoning to deal with the swim pool issue that you guys dealt with. So I think it'll be an exercise that we go through, and I think there'll be a lot of input from staff back and forth in council and P&amp;Z so that we get this all right.
Okay. Everybody in agreement? Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Item 8, routine business. Item 8.1, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and council, your next regular scheduled council meeting is on October 21st at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. There being no further business before this council, we'll adjourn at 7:38. Thank you, everyone. Go enjoy National Night Out.